Good morning, let's call this meeting to order Tuesday, May 25th. Welcome everyone, seven months to Christmas. First up, some remarks about the passing of Larry Shaw, former warden. Today we remember Larry Shaw who passed away on May the 10th, 2021 at the age of 80. Larry served on Eldon County Council from 77 to 82. And in 1991 is both Reeve and Deputy Reeve of the Township of Yarmouth. He served as Eldon County Warden in 1982. And was the coordinator of the Eldon County International Plowing Match in 1985. On behalf of Eldon County Council, express my condolences to the Shaw family. Today we recognize and remember his service to the Township of Yarmouth and the County of Elgin. Many of us have fond memories of Larry, colorful gentleman. And we thank him for his service to the county. I'd ask now if you're able to rise in a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. First order up is adoptions of the minutes from May the 11th, 2021. I assume everyone's had a chance to read them. Are there any errors or missions? If you're happy with them, entertain a motion to adopt them.
The move.
Moved by Deputy Deputy Warden Mennel and seconded by Bob Purcell. Thank you. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Remind everyone of disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. I note none. Move on to motion to move into committee of the whole, please. Moved by Jones, seconded by Martin. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. I have one thing I'd like to do first here before I forget again. We have a new employee. I'm pleased to announce that Stephanie Godby has recently rejoined our human resources team as manager of the H R. Stephanie brings more than eight years of municipal and health and care experience. She has a passion for coaching and mentoring staff and has experienced building positive labor relations with union partners. Welcome to the team Stephanie, we look forward to working with you. Can you give us a wave please?
Thank you so much.
We'll wave back.
Thank you, I'm very happy to be here.
All right, all the best Stephanie and welcome.
Thank you.
We'll move on to reports of council. Director of Homes, Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Welcome.
Thank you. So before you, there's a report to council on the Homes Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement, otherwise known as the E M S A. And in particular Schedule G. So the county does have a current E M S A agreement in place with the Southwest Land. And it does require the submission of a signed annual declaration of compliance. The reporting requirements for specific reports related to performance, occupancy, staffing, funding and compliance. And it relates to a declaration of by the C A O. That we fulfilled its obligations under the E M S A from the period of April 1, 2020 to March 31st, 2021. And to the best of staff knowledge, we certainly have met those requirements. So there's two recommendations before council. The first is that the report be received and filed. And the second is that council authorize the C A O to sign the Schedule G for the period of April 1, 2020 to March 31st, 2021. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? We're satisfied to entertain a motion to receive.
Giger, I'll move.
Thank you for that. And McPhail, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have purchasing coordinator procurement activity report from January 1st to March 31st. Take it away Mike, please. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to county council. So this quarterly procurement activity report details the awards of contracts that were approved by directors. Died between 15,000 and 250,000 notes. This report covers the period of January to March of this year. The list of the projects, the approved supplier and the amounts are attached as appendix A. All contracts comply with the county's procurement policy. And the recommendation is the report be received and filed and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? Looks fairly straightforward. Mover and seconder please.
So move.
Moved by Mennel and Jones. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail. Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next report is from General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, Official Plan Review. What We Heard Report Number One, Public Engagement Feedback. Brian, you want to lead us off?
Morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to council. In accordance with the county's official plan review, public engagement strategy doctrine endorsed by council earlier this year. Staff is happy to present before you the first edition of the What We Heard Report. Which includes a summary of the engagement efforts completed to date, comments considered consolidated rather into various topic themes. And actual as we heard of feedback from our community appended to the report, complete with staff responses. This information report recently presented to the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee and now the council. Will be made available to the public and posted on the county's official plan website. And its presentation noted via social media. The next report edition will detail ongoing consultations with L M Ps and other agency community stakeholders. Thereafter, discussion reports on various topics like affordable housing, servicing and development, provincial policy changes and impacts to the county's policies, et cetera. Complete with recommendations will be presented ultimately to council for guidance. Staff efforts to increase public participation will soon be further enhanced with the use of the banking table platform. Which is expected to launch in the coming week. Additional consultation efforts will also involve engaging with each of our settlement community groups and associations. With that, Nancy and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any questions for Nancy or Brian? Lot of reading in there. Counselor Ketchba, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Certainly appreciate the opportunity. Contained within the report, as you've mentioned, are a number of comments and actually takes quite a while to read through them all. One thing that stands out and is of particular interest to Bayham is mention of a discussion paper coming forward on development on partial services. And I'm just quite wondering whether Brian and or Nancy could give us some expectation when we can might see that discussion paper.
Ted, Brian, Nancy.
Thanks. Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. That would be the first discussion paper that would be looking to author. We're doing research on it as we speak. I would anticipate something being brought to first to Rural Initiatives Planning Advisory Committee and then council ultimately July of this year. So that's the anticipated date.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Counselor Bob, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Warden. I appreciate all the information they've gathered so far and I realize this is a work in progress, but there is one piece I think that county could probably help Nancy and ourselves with. And that is cutting some of the red tape. As you know, the provincial government once a year puts forward a whole list of red tape things that they want to try and cut or streamline or clear up. And the next one is due in October, November. And I know through Jeff's office, we'd be able to as a county, put some practical solutions in front of them. What I'm referring to is settlement areas, we've talked about those before. Nancy's hands are kind of tied with the current rules. And there may be some way we could get more flexibility for the Nancy level or the county level for taking lands that are either sterilized for whatever reasons, they're contaminated or other ministries have got in the way or lands that are people just thought they were going to develop and are no longer going to develop those types of things. I think that this would be a good opportunity for us as a county to work with Nancy and send in a comprehensive list of those types of red tape situations that maybe we could get some flexibility, more flexibility at the local level. As what Nancy has to deal with with the settlement area, it's completely different than what they have to deal with in Toronto or they have to deal with in North Bay or or any of the other places. So we should be able to get some flexibility without losing control of planning. That's just some extra work. I don't want to make a lot of extra work, but I think in the long term, it might be very helpful for us and all this stuff is fresh in front of us.
Thank you, Bob. Further comments? All right, as Ed said, it's lots and lots of reading. The more you read, the more you, it is interesting. Lots of from one end to the other for sure. Nothing further? Do we have a motion to adopt, to receive, I guess? Moved by Jones, seconded by Ketchba. Please call the motion.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Our county's listener amendment to approved format telecommunication equipment consent and road user agreement. Steve?
To Mr. Warden, through you to council. At the last meeting, council discussed and thereafter directed preparation and presentation of a potential amendment to the previously approved telecommunication equipment consent and road user agreement. Particularly in relation to security provisions. Before you is a
Excuse me, Mr. Warden, can can we speak up a little bit, Steve? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh. That's probably see if I can. How's that?
That's better.
Okay, I'll start over. So at the last meeting, council discussed and thereafter directed preparation and presentation of a proposed amendment to the previously approved telecommunication equipment consent and road user agreement. Particularly in relation to security provisions. Before you is a report. And appended revisions seeking approval of amendment to that format. The primary elements being reduction in the max or the minimum discretionary security requirement from 25,000 to $10,000. And a clearer extension of the nature of security deposit to include other security which would include cash. As indicated, the proposed amendments, there wasn't many that were required. They are all appended at Schedule A to the report. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Gibson? Counselor McPhail.
I'll move the report to Mr. Warden.
Appreciate that. Counselor Bob, go second, please. Thank you. Further discussion or ready for the vote? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. C A O, Eldon County Upland Communications, Inc., Telecommunication Equipment Consent and Road User Agreement.
Brian and Steve. Steve?
Brian and Steve.
All right, so I will jump in here. For you is a self-explanatory report seeking approval and authorization to execute. I'm going to call the telecommunication agreement between Elgin and Upland Communication, Inc. The proposed agreement follows the new revised format agreement, particularly with respect to security. The key elements of the agreement are set forth on page two of the report and include the following, compliance with the format. Secondly, application of fees and charges paid for preparation of the agreement and first year annual charge under the previous road user agreement to fees and charges for preparation of the agreement. And annual administration fee under the new agreement for five years. And cancellation of the previous road user agreement. And transfer of permits and security held under the road user agreement or issued under the road user agreement for the new serum project to the telecommunication agreement. So effectively, we've once signed, the agreement will cancel the R U A and everything is flipped over to the new telecommunication agreement.
Thank you, Steve.
And I should, it's my understanding that the format is acceptable to Upland.
That is good news. Questions for Steve? Mover and seconder, please.
The move.
Deputy Deputy Warden and Mary French. Thank you. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Eldon County Council Strategic Plan, Staff Action Plan Update.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an updated action plan. This action plan was originally developed by the leadership team in February and March of 2020. Was most recently updated and presented to council March 9th of 2021. And you'll see from the attached action plan, we are making great progress with respect to a number of county council strategic plan priorities. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Julie? I found it very helpful. It when you follow it and read it, it does show that we are making progress. We are moving forward on many fronts. So I was very pleased to see it. Any further discussion? Motion to adopt. Moved by Jones and Giger. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Move on to council correspondence and items for consideration. I see none. Consent agenda. We have five. We take them all together. We have SWIFT with their monthly project update, Community Schools Alliance. The Eldon County Poster of the International Plowing Match. Scholarship, hoopla newsletter. Library partnership and the Office's Solicitor General with a letter regarding Eldon County's concerns with Fire College, but any discussion on any of them?
I'm making motions, Stephen, file.
All right, wonder. Perhaps Counselor McPhail can take an opportunity and promote, this is the last scholarship. Maybe give a a push for, we want this one to be a good one. We talked to there earlier about Larry's involvement, Larry Shaw's involvement in the 85, but you had a pretty big involvement in 2010. Give it a plug.
I'll certainly thank you, Mr. Warden. There were, there were a lot of people that were responsible for the successful 2010 plowing match and certainly how time goes by so quickly that it's been 10 years and and our scholarship funding has come to an end. And as you've said, this is the the last year to hand out $2,500 scholarships to both male and and female second year post-secondary school students. And you know, I would encourage anyone that's in that program to take advantage of this because you know, 2,500 bucks is a nice little, nice little chunk if you're going to school and so I haven't, I haven't spoken with Brian to see how the applicants are are coming in, but I would just say to county council, if you know someone in your community that could possibly qualify for this, make sure that they get their application in. At some point in time, Mr. Warden, I'm quite happy that that as you were involved with the international plowing match yourself, that you have the opportunity to hand out the final scholarship. So looking forward to it.
Well, certainly it's, it's an opportunity of lifetime and friendships lasts forever. And and as we've heard this morning, some of the stories and memories, something to be proud of for the county. Thank you, Counselor McPhail.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. We don't have any applicants yet and we've been pushing and promoting this program quite extensively through our social media channels and otherwise. So it is increasingly important that counselors try to push this locally as well. Would be great to be able to award this to a couple of deserving recipients.
Absolutely. I remember last year and actually one of my neighbors and he was pretty proud moment and she was quite excited. As they were, they were out. We were just literally starting with Zoom and they were struggling in that, but there you could sense the excitement of them. So hopefully this will talk it up a bit and get some good applicants. Thank you for that. I guess mover to receive the items of information. Moved by Ketchba, seconded by Jones. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Move on to other business. Do you have any statements or inquiries by members? See none? Any notice of motions? Matters of urgency?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. We would like to add an additional closed session item and this is in regard to contract negotiations. So we would need a two-thirds majority vote to consider that enclosed.
Moved by Purcell. Seconded by Giger. Please call the vote on that.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
All right, thank you for that. So are we ready to move into closed session? I don't think we need a break yet, do we?
No.
Okay. Motion to move into closed session, please.
I'll move that.
Martin and French. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
All right. We are back. I'd like to have a motion to move into open session, please. Moved by Ketchba, seconded by Jones. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We're back in open session. We have some recommendations to adopt from the committee of the whole.
We'll just have to go through the rising reports for each.
All right, first one.
For closed session, item number one, be it resolved that the report from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Move, move by Mennel and Jones. Please, any discussion? If not, call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next.
Be it resolved for closed session, item number two, that the report from the chief administrative officer be received.
Mover and seconder, please. French and Purcell. Please, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
For closed session, item number three, which was contract negotiations. Be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Giger. And Martin, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Consideration bylaws?
We had a first, second and third read of bylaw 21-24 being a bylaw to approve and authorize execution of a collective agreement between the corporation of the county of Elgin and the Ontario Nurses Association with respect to all nurses at Elgin Manor Terrace Lodge and Boebier Villa.
Moved by Jones and Mennel. It's called the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.